I have an invocation from Father Joel.
Lord, we thank you for the work that you've given us to do. We ask you help us to go about it with responsibility, with generosity, with wisdom. Guide the course of this meeting today. Help us to see what we need to see, to do what we need to do. We ask to call this in your most holy name. Amen.
Thank you. Please stand for our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Lord, and I speak so proudly, using my righteous hands, for nation under God, in the best of all, with liberty and justice for all.
Has the meeting been properly posted?
It has.
Thank you. Rule call. White Lake?
Here, District One.
Okay, we can do that. From District Two, Semke. District Three, Gady.
Here.
District Four, Bringey.
Here.
District Five, Ofty. District Six, Padretti.
Here.
District Seven, Mehan Stroop. District Eight, Dave Egan. Are you here? District Nine, Olson. District Ten, Easterday. District Ten, Easterday. District Eleven, Jacobson. District Twelve, Henry. District Thirteen, Taylor. District Fourteen, Yitri. District Fifteen, Swiger. District Sixteen, Wilson. District Seventeen, Muller. District Eighteen, Mitchell. District Nineteen, Staney. District Ten, Easterday. Are you online? Okay. So we have eighteen present, one absent. A motion to excuse Frank Easterday. A motion by Padretti.
Second.
Semke. Approve the minutes of the March twenty-eighth, two thousand and three. Oh, all in favor, aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Approve the minutes of the March twenty-eighth meeting. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Motion by Dave Egan. Second by Martha. All in favor, aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Do we have any audience, the visitors? Anybody online wish to speak? Go ahead and identify yourself and speak online.
Um, I think you're talking to me, Lauren. This is Stacy Standborn from out at the Vernon County landfill. Um, I just wanted to quickly address the proposal that was sent out to all the Vernon County Board Supervisors last Monday.
Okay.
Um, so for those of you that were unable to make the infrastructure meeting, I kind of went into into a pretty detailed um, discussion on that proposal that was sent out. Um, and I'll keep this brief because I you guys got enough going on today. But if anybody has any questions regarding that, please reach out to me. I have a full write-up of um, what was presented at infrastructure last week. Um, and I can just leave it at that unless there's any immediate questions you guys would like to ask now.
Could you send that, Stacy, to the full board so we could review it?
Yep, I would be happy to do so.
Back on. Anybody have any announcements? Paulie.
Just to let you know, a town association meeting of Vernon County unit will meet here next Thursday, the twenty-seventh, at seven thirty P M. Maybe I hopefully have some uh, county uh, department heads and usually about thirty of us show up. And we'll have some new county town board members later too. Good, thanks.
Thank you. Lauren.
Uh, Tim Hunt, online. His hand up as well.
Okay, go ahead, Tim. Can you hear us, Tim? Tim, your hand is up. Tim Hunt, online, your hand is raised. Do you want it raised? Now, we're going to go to the elections. Um, we have a lot of people that are up for election and they can be reseated. And then we have Mary Bringey that has served her limit, I guess. She's limiting out on her committee. For information, Sandy has agreed to just switch places, and that would be the simplest. But is anybody, um, I guess we're opening nominations for uh, Vernon Manor.
No, Human Services.
Human Services?
Three seats.
Three seats on Human Services, and they're all.
And Mary.
Oh, Mary, okay. Um, Mary Bringey, John Padretti is eligible for another term, and Nancy Bogers has accepted another term uh, on the public side. She's eligible, yeah. So she's a citizen-at-large.
We'll take nominations for Mary's seat.
Are there any nominations for Mary's seat? We're going to go down and fill the other seats in. John Padretti is eligible for uh, another term. John?
If I could say, I, the committee is great, and it's fine, but the reason I came to the county board is to learn as much as I can about Vernon County. So if there's anybody else that would like to have that seat, I'm not opposed. I want to learn as much as I can about Vernon County and try to be an impact wherever I can. So I'm leaving it up to you guys to decide if I should be there or if I should do something else and find something to expand my knowledge more and maybe do something also. Not opposed to it, but if there's something else that's out there, I would be like, I would be willing to learn whatever else is out there.
Allison.
I just have a clarifying question, although you're great on the committee, so I'd like to keep you there, but I hear what you're saying. Elected, it's an elected, so each of us serve on an elected
Correct.
committee. So if John were to not continue, then he'd have to be in a different elected committee, and then we'd reshuffle all the decks?
Yes.
So my endorsement to John is a little stronger now.
I'll second your nomination.
If I'm on that committee again, especially for three years, I've got big plans for the jail, Roy. I'm not going to let anybody in here sit idly by. I'll bug every one of you until it gets done. Just saying.
Great point.
Yep, that's a good point.
All in favor of John continuing to serve on his committee, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Uh, Nancy Bogers has indicated she would continue to serve. Are there any other nominations for a citizen committee?
Say nominate Nancy. Yes, I would.
Okay. A second. John? All in favor, aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, now.
So then I just had another question, sorry. Mary was the chair of that, so do we vote at the committee? Okay, thank you.
Now we have we also have another, we've actually got three off of.
Was she on Vernon Manor?
She was on Vernon Manor. Now you'd have to replace her, John. I guess, Sandy, we have to ask for your resignation.
Use, use the mic, please.
May I please resign from Vernon Manor?
You may. Okay, the first one is Mary Mehan Stroop. She is uh, eligible for reelection. Do we have a nomination for Mary? Uh, Kyle Semke, John Padretti. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? All in favor of Mary Mehan Stroop retaining her seat, signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Uh, Barb McNeil is a citizen-at-large, uh, also eligible to be reinstated, and she has indicated with a letter that she is willing to serve. Are there any nominations for citizens-at-large? All in favor of, any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? All in favor of Barb McNeil as a citizen member for Vernon Manor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Now we've got one more. Sandy. Sandy has resigned, so her seat is vacant, and Kyle. Kyle nominates Mary Bringey. Seconded by Kelly. All in, any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? All in favor of uh, Mary uh, Bringey to be the representative on Vernon Manor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Under ten, Resolution B has been withdrawn. So we're on Resolution twenty-two-three-dash-thirty, amend paragraph five A of the county board rules. A motion to bring it to the floor. Allison. Martha. Who is going to speak on this? Mary? It was just to clarify. Let's find the resolution. That were, uh, if passed, this would basically institute a a minimum of seven days. Our rules currently state that items need to be reduced to writing and and got to the clerk when possible, fourteen days in advance, but now we're saying, but no less than seven days. So we're putting that at least a one-week deadline on this stuff. I also included a little picture for you to show you what the life of an agenda of. And I'll give you just a brief little synopsis of that. This is um, this is all agendas, not just this meeting. The all agendas, whether we create them or if they're created by another department, go to an email group labeled agendas. And on that agendas group are some department heads, but it's also the board. So you're getting, you're getting these emails, all agendas, you're getting those. Once they get to our office, we will post those on the website if they haven't already been posted. So we're, we're double-checking. We've had a few instances where the links weren't working and things like that. So we're actually checking that now to work with departments to make sure that stuff's all working. We're going to hard copy and print it, put it in the hall and archive it. We email it out to all of these Vernon County Times, County Line, City of Westby, City of Hillsboro, Village of Stoddard. And um, I did have a question about that, so I confirmed these three municipalities are posting those agendas on their bulletin boards. Uh, and then we send a confirmation email back to agendas, and that's where you'll see General Morgan saying that this meeting has been properly posted. So that's once you get that email, then we're confirming that we've done all these steps. And this is every agenda, for every committee, every meeting. Dave?
I think, I was reading this the other day. It's an excellent simplification of what we consider to be a pretty complicated process. So thank you very much for simplifying it.
Allison.
Yeah, and the purpose of this resolution was, we were charged last meeting because of the timing. And I think in our discussion at general government, we really learned that the best way to support the clerk's office and being able to do this is we all have to be accountable for that timeline. So we may have to live with, if we don't meet that seven days, that it's not going to be on the agenda because it's, it's not really the clerk's fault, if you will, if we don't, you know, hold the standard that we set.
I'm under the impression, oh, Mary?
I would agree with that, but then we already got an email saying these two other things were amended. So we draw the line and then we break it within the same timeframe. That's my issue. And I agree, those things should have been on there, but we just did what we said we weren't going to do.
That, I'll just, the rule hasn't passed yet. Kyle?
Let's say if an opportunity for funding arises uh, in that for the county, I would hope that we would not abide by this in case to forego receiving some funding, just as a fourth thought, you know?
The intention is that if that happens, we would create an item that's um, suspend the rules to consider these other items that come out late. Therefore, it identifies them as being late, and you as a board can decide to, no, we're not going to consider those. And that'll be the end of it. You just, you just have to suspend your rule. Any other discussion or comments? Okay, all in favor of Resolution twenty-two-three-dash-thirty to amend paragraph five A of the county board rules, signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Administrative coordinators report. If we have one yet. She was working hard down Mexico.
Good morning. I'm excited to be here. Um, I, yes, had a great time on vacation last week, so unfortunately, I did have to miss some committee meetings. However, I do still have several updates to share with you, so I will get started on those. Um, at the general government committee, you tasked that committee with setting some priorities for my role as the interim county coordinator. Um, really, those priorities were just lifted up from the actual job description to make it a little more manageable to balance that role and my role as the grants officer. So priorities were set and discussed, and so I really thank the general government committee for their support um, in my time managing both roles. Does anyone have any questions about those priorities? Good. Um, as you all know too, we signed a contract with E O Johnson to transition to um, all of our new printers. And Connor and the rest of the I T team have been working really hard to make that transition, and we are ninety-seven percent complete. Um, all but solid waste and Vernon Acres and a couple of units at the Sheriff's Department have been replaced. And Connor has worked with all the departments to train them in on our new system. I personally think it's very user-friendly and wonderful, and I really look at the efficiencies and cost savings that we will see um, in time with this new process. So shout out to the I T department. Um, at the March board meeting, you passed a resolution approving the purchasing card policy, and I just want to follow up that Bobby is holding an information session for department heads and people within departments who use any of these purchasing cards to clarify the transition process and answer any questions and address concerns that may arise from the process. But um, the intent is that the new purchasing cards will be live the first week of June, so just around the corner. So we will have one credit card account um, that will be managed and um, that we will be paying out by the finance department monthly instead of several. Uh, Bobby and Connor have concluded their financial needs assessment, and Bobby has shared that with all of you. It's a sixty-three-page document, um, which took so much time as they met with every department to gather their needs, their challenges within their departments with our current financial system, payroll system, and so forth. Um, I really encourage you to take a look at that in its entirety. It does a really nice job of just highlighting all the feedback that they gathered from each department and then recommendations for next steps. However, Bobby is willing to put a presentation together for the next board meeting, if you would like, that would give an overview of that report. So that is something we could definitely look at adding to the agenda if there's interest in that. She will also be sharing uh, an overview at the finance committee meeting on Thursday. Um, Bobby will also at the finance committee on Thursday be sharing a recap of twenty-twenty-two financials or twenty-twenty-two. So this will be a very informative finance committee meeting Thursday, so we encourage you all to to tune in if you're able to do that. Also, within the finance department, um, budget timeline for twenty-twenty-four begins in May already. Bobby's done a really good job working with her committee to outline a timeline that will keep us all on schedule so we can get the twenty-twenty-four budget approved and up on the board floor and approved um, in October, I believe. November, sorry, thank you. And Bobby and her team will be working on all the budget worksheets that will be released to department heads in July. And then department heads will work with finance manager and the county coordinator on their proposed twenty-twenty-four budgets, which will be presented to committees in September. Uh, within the H R department, um, Tricia shared at the general government committee that last month, so in March, we had four new hires, ten accepted job offers, ten terminations. However, a lot of those were positions that were on call who haven't worked in some time. And so it was really just cleanup, if you will, in terms of our payroll records. Um, and we currently have seventeen openings, a handful of those are interns or temporary positions, uh, positions at Vernon Manor, and then some within A D R C. And then my last, um, my last thing to report is, within the grants department, we were awarded uh, in twenty-twenty-one that micro enterprise business grant program where small businesses with five or fewer employees who met certain income requirements were eligible to receive five thousand dollars um, to help reimburse them for operating expenses uh, during the pandemic. Um, I just closed that grant, but we were able to award nineteen small businesses, each with five thousand dollars. And before I left for vacation, I hand-delivered several of those checks. And I get a little emotional talking about it, but a couple owners burst into tears because they had completely depleted their personal savings account to keep their business afloat. They didn't know if they could keep their business operating, and this was what they needed um, to kind of give them a hand up and keep going for a little bit longer. So I just wanted to share that with everyone, that that was something that the county was providing um, to our community, to help business owners. Any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Uh, any petitions? The ordinance has been eliminated from the, uh, we're not. Withdrawn. Any memorials or remonstrances? Reports from standing or special committees? We're going to have the health department up here.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay, obviously? Um, thank you for having me here today. I need to grab one thing from Connor here. So good morning. Um, what brings me here today is actually um, as we were talking at our home committee meeting for the health department, um, we started looking at budgets for twenty-twenty-four already, of course. And um, as I was going through, I realized that it had been three years since, in March, since the start of the pandemic. So I thought it would be nice to share not only our response, but the fiscal impact to the county and just a little bit more about what all we did in the last three years. Sorry. So to start out, first of all, I want to thank everybody on this committee that stood through our health depart, stood with our health department through the entire pandemic. Um, without your support, uh, we really couldn't have been able to do the things that we needed to do for our community, so thank you. Um, just sharing a few of our pictures about our response. Um, you can see that uh, the big picture right here. That was our first vaccine event that was held in January of twenty-twenty-one. That was happening when all of the social distancing guidelines and everything were still in place. Um, so we opted to use our emergency management tent. Uh, thank you to Brandon for all the work that he did in helping set that tent up. Um, that particular day, I think it was maybe twenty degrees. Correct me if I'm wrong, Brandon. Um, that first event, we did over two hundred and sixty vaccines. Um, it was quite, quite an undertaking for our small, little department of eight people. Um, we actually ramped up to over twenty-five staff during the whole event, so during the whole response with the pandemic. The next event that we had for immunizations, we, Brandon, did you hide on me? I think he's out in the hallway. Um, the next event we had, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was forty mile an hour or thirty mile an hour winds. Yeah, with minus four wind chill. And it actually picked the whole tent up, and we were holding on to the tent, literally. It was crazy. We had to very quickly evacuate and go into the human service department and use that space. So it was quite an adventure um, as we moved along, so just thought you'd enjoy some pictures. Um, Connor, do you want to bring up the one of the E O C, please? Brandon sent me another picture this morning. Um, during the event, this was our operational space located in the basement of the Earlson Building. During the event, this was our operational space located in the basement of the Erlinson Building. And you can see, that was in April, so just at the beginning of our response as we were ramping up, adding staff, adding computers, adding desks, adding IT capacity. It really was quite the event. So I think Brandon snapped this just to have a little perspective on our workspace, so thank you for that. I thought I'd just share, when I put this PowerPoint together, of course, this is all of the data. This is John Hopkins data, March to March. If anyone is interested in numbers, I know everyone is kind of over all of that data, so I won't spend a lot of time on that, but know that there is reference for that. What I did think was important was that when we calculated total hours worked, our staff, our supplemental people that helped us out, we had 22,724 hours logged during the pandemic, so quite the ask and quite the move for our community. I put this in here to keep our spirits light in the E O C. We often had memes or funny little things that Brandon would find or I would find. This really hit home with us as healthcare workers. It literally changed hourly sometimes in those first months, so we all kind of had that look about us. Just some few facts about kind of what we did. I already said that we've been in the capacity for over three years. The emergency declaration will end May 11th of this year, if you had not heard that yet. Some more statistics, total vaccines given by our staff, just our, you know, we, even during the events, we only had four nurses that we gave vaccines. So that's a pretty huge lift to do 6,790 vaccines, and most of that was in the first year of 2021. And if you look at the data countywide, right now, we're at, I think, 55, 56% total vaccine rate. Our staff did 30% of the total doses for the county. So if you think of, you know, our big healthcare systems, Gunderson, Mayo, scenic bluffs, we still did 30%, so that's pretty impressive. So kudos to our staff for stepping up to the plate there. Mass clinics, vaccines, we did a lot of guidance to businesses, schools, long-term care facilities, constant communication with the public, social media releases, and seemingly endless calls and emails. And if I'm going too fast or anyone has questions, please just interrupt me. Oops, sorry, I get click happy up here. As I talked about earlier, looking at budgets moving into 2024, I thought it would be interesting for you as a board to see some of our total numbers. So during the pandemic, a lot of our funding sources for immunizations, communicable disease, anything that we would typically do, the state let us use some of that money towards COVID if we needed it. So some of the bigger pots of money, the monitoring and detection was the E L C money that was a federal reimbursement, routes to recovery, of course, was federal. So just sharing a little bit of those different pots. So in total, over the three years, it's over 995,000 was the total amount for staff and salary. Average, if you break that down, it's about 300,000 a year, which, you know, if we're talking about adding in nurses and ramping up for other events, that would be about what we would expect. Most of our budget was staffing time and reimbursement for that. Of course, medical supplies, paper, postage, storage of data and paperwork. As a health department, we have to by statute keep records for seven years for everything. Some programs in fact ask us to keep for up to 12. So data storage and that electronic record, what you'll hear about with Bobby, it kind of ties nicely into all of that and our need for, you know, perhaps some improvement with how we store that. That is a cost. Phone costs, desks, I don't even know how many phone calls we made to community members to support them if they were sick. I haven't even looked at that, but I can't imagine how many it would really be. And then a new trailer for our response needs through the end of vaccines and moving forward into the future, we did partner with the emergency response on that. Of course, the benefits of the funding, we did get some national recognition. With the CDC, we actually were the ICAT system. Brandon, do you want to talk a little bit about that or add anything? Brandon helped coordinate that response.
Yeah, with the ICAT team, it was a federal team that was brought in, contracted locally. There were some contract nurses that were local that came and helped, but it was a federal team. They shipped everything to us. As far as supplies, we didn't have to use our own, and they were here for about a month doing testing down at the old highway shop. We just provided the space and they ran with it, so they were, they were good to work with. I think the manager was from way out east, I think Pennsylvania, I believe, is where he came from to manage that site, so.
And we were only one of, what, four areas in our region to be approved for that? And one of the big reasons that I think we were was that Brandon did such a great job in the initial phases of the pandemic, getting our Testing Tuesdays set up. So I think they recognized that. It was recognized at the state level. So again, kudos to Brandon, definitely a collaboration there. Mass clinic distribution, again, we continue to support schools. We go into schools and provide vaccine clinics as requested. And just a side note too, that this, the funding that we received and all of the funding that I shared, those numbers are just the Health Department. They aren't for Human Services, they aren't for the highway, they aren't for, you know, Roy or his department, they're just for the Health Department. But, you know, there was a large offset to tax levy that did go back to the county, so. So where do we move forward coming out of this pandemic? What do we want to see for our Public Health Department here in Vernon County? I did bring a few brochures in my mind. I think a lot of people don't really know what the Health Department does and how we can be of benefit coming out of COVID. So I just wanted to take a brief moment to talk about that. Certainly Vernon County is not unique. I think every health department in the state and likely the nation is struggling with how, how do we get back on our feet? Lots of things changed post-COVID. We, of course, realized during COVID that we had been underfunded in public health for many years. We didn't have the staff we needed to immediately respond to these events. So lots of institutes are looking at ways to measure how we can best move forward. So the, the data up here right now, of course, Vernon County, based on our population, best practice models, and remember, that's, you know, probably our dream goal of staffing, would put us at 23 FTEs or 23 full-time staff within our Health Department. We are currently functioning with nine full-time staff. And we're meeting our needs, we're meeting statutory requirements. But as we move forward, if we really want to promote robust public health, it's a guideline for us to shoot for. So I think as we look at coming out of COVID, we need to look at our programming, what fits, what doesn't. Our Home Committee is doing a lot of work on this right now. Provide programming and support to the community that is meaningful and, and what our community wants to see. So there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes, yeah.
So you say, you say that the guideline is 23 FTEs. You're, you're fulfilling needs at nine, so what are, what's missing?
We're, we're filling statutory needs. I think if we, if we want to promote a broader public health system and be more ready to respond to other events, let's say we had a tornado event, and we were going to partner with Brandon to help provide resources, to provide, you know, reunification centers during that event. We have some staff, but we still will have to be ramping up our, our staff up, our people that we have in backup. You know, ideally, if we had more people to work full-time, and I'm not asking for another FTE right now, I'm just sharing what national statistics are saying. I, I think we're in a good spot right now. We have implemented what's called a staff up policy, so members of our community that came in during COVID have stayed on with us. And Brandon and I are working on having, you know, meetings a couple times a year to give them updates, to make sure that they're able to log in, that they have what they need so they can come on quickly. So that is a change we've made post-COVID. And I think that there are lots of ways, you know, that we could improve. We can, if we had an electronic health record, you know, we don't have a standardized one, most counties do. That can save us staffing time, right? Work smarter, not harder. So it's not, in my mind, it's not necessarily the FTEs that we need to look at, it's what work do we need to get done? How can we do it efficiently? But thank you for that clarification. I hope that helps. So one last plug I would have for all of you is to educate yourselves, know what our Health Department does. I really feel we all do better when we all do better. And any advocating you can do as community members and board supervisors to promote and find funding for our Health Department is always welcome. If anyone is interested in learning more, we do have the WALGAB meetings, which is the Wisconsin Association of Local Board of Directors. So you as a board are welcome to come to those meetings in Madison anytime you would like. Certainly reach out to me if you would like to go to one. And lastly, this is our core group. At our Christmas party this year, it was really nice to come back together after COVID, and we all thank you very much. That's all I have. Yeah, Brad.
I have a comment too.
Question, the 7,000 approximate cases in Vernon County, I think 100 some deaths, so that's about 1%. Does that reflect the nationals? We're all just curious to see how that.
Yeah, and remember, I think, I think any data is only as good as how you look at that data, right? So those numbers, I don't think are necessarily reflective because we have so much under-reporting going on of actual COVID cases. You know, people are doing at-home tests now and they aren't reporting them. Those are only the reported cases to the state. And I do think that that, that is consistent nationally. I, I don't, I think numbers are probably much, much higher on what total COVID cases were. I don't know that I could speak to the death numbers. I don't know if that's the answer you wanted or exactly what you were asking there. Yeah, Alice.
So I was going to comment, when I was pointing to the Health Committee, I thought that's where they spent, sent county board members to die, but it's been extremely interesting, all the, all the permitting that's handled through the Health Department, food, food service. And it goes on and on, and the reports that you give about what's lurking around the corner, you know, makes it, makes it difficult to sleep at night, but but what happens also that I didn't realize is that the local sanitation department furnishes us with the data on testing the sewage and, and the scary things that show up in there.
Well, it's a, actually, that data comes from the state, from the Wisconsin Department of Health Services. So, so data in wastewater, which is a whole nother discussion. The, the gist of why they do that is because if they start seeing, because people aren't testing now, right? How are we going to know another surge is coming? So if they can detect those genomes in the wastewater and they see bumps that go really high, that can tell us that it's starting to spike in our community. So what actions could we take then as Health Department professionals to get that word out to the community? We might be seeing a rise in this. So that's the gist of the data. Sometimes those two don't always mesh. You know, like we see low reporting numbers, but we have high sewage waste data, so then we know people aren't, aren't reporting their test data. So, but it is interesting, Dave. Yeah, Mary.
I would just like to thank you, Amy, you took over in the beginning. We had a switch of a department head, Brandon, thank you, a department of one, and Connor, we had a switch in the department head, and Brian on his team. Those three switched overnight, basically, and that first testing, I sat in line for that and that didn't happen, and it, it wasn't happening. And you and Brandon worked together to make sure it happened because the community wanted it, the doctors did. And I waited in line way past the army to get in, just to see what this process was like. So you got this county through a really difficult time, and I just want to acknowledge the hard work, and I know you had sleepless nights, many. And you had community people, it didn't matter what you did, it wasn't right. It was a difficult time, and you held it together for all of us and our health, so thank you.
Thank you. I won't bring up the Marburg virus, which is the next virus lurking around the, I'll just end my presentation now. But thank you all again.
Alice, Anne?
Sorry.
Well, I feel like that should just end with Mary's kudos, so I can just ask you later.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Any other unfinished business? Next meeting date, May 16th?
That would be the third Tuesday.
That would be the third Tuesday?
Yep.
That work with everybody? Okay, any agenda items for the next meeting?
I would like to have Bobby do a presentation for us on the finance findings, please.
The next meeting, right?
For, for the next meeting, correct? Okay.
Historical society.
Historical Society is going to give a presentation at the meeting? You're just informing the Historical Society is going to give a presentation next month?
I'd like to have invite Roy Torgerson to share some information about Sheriff's Department. I was lucky enough to run into him last week. And he took about 10 minutes of time and explained to me things that I never realized the Sheriff's Department was doing, so.
We get a ticket?
He had to give me a little Narcan. I think Roy has so much information to share with us.
Okay. Anything else? Motion to adjourn? Charlie, Mary? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passed, please.